Call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Do the pledge of allegiance. Can you lead us?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for December 8th, 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for November 24th, 2025.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
Up in the very first, who was there, it says blank, John blank, Zach Kern?
Who?
John Kern.
Tom Kern?
That's Tom. It says John.
Yeah, I don't know who, I don't know.
And it says it's from San Dylan, I can't think of.
Oh, yeah, the guy that.
I know who it is, but I don't know his last name.
The white hair that was up.
Yeah.
John Dillon?
John Dillon.
There you go, that's what we needed, Mary.
This is the sign.
Thank you.
Okay, so, keep going. Let's see, page, page two, down to the bottom when we're talking about. Please support. Um, let's see, it's the third line down. It's suspicious persons, person circumstances, comma, or should be a comma, those went up by seven, and said, cross out the we, and cross out the second on these. That one is easy. On page three, the top line, missing all of them once, I think it would be missing all at once, take of them out of there. And down three lines, I don't know, she for XX, probably about XX were taken, evidently she didn't know how many. Are there where there's an XX? I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I don't know what the number was either, I don't remember.
Page four.
What's Dick coming in?
Uh, well, the paragraph that starts with Mark Brown, way, three lines up, is can be taken out of it. People of this area, it is his feeling, is taken out, it's his feeling that whatever we do, and whatever the cost being, is reasonable. I think is can just be removed. Page five. Uh, the very fir-, the very first sentence, um, now this is in front of the board, I think it should say, it is time to start that process. It's ju-, I'm just changing wording, saying the same thing. Um, down two more where Dick starts talking, um, let's see, down the fourth, fourth line, it starts, we, we are only in, only in informing. I think in only can be taken out, and only at once. And then two places, it's John, well, it's gotta be John Dillon, because it's San Dylan. Um, down to the bottom, information meeting prior to the meeting day, um, this is the board directed, it should be the town manager to research. It didn't say who we directed. Page six. Uh, down one, two, three, fourth paragraph, starts with Mike Jones, and it's the last line, you can take that out of that, bringing another officer on, that doesn't belong in Keep going down to Bob Spalding, which is almost to the bottom, we can take us out of that first, first sentence. And that's all the nitpicking I can do for today.
Do you have anything to mark round?
No, she got it pretty well covered. I've got no nits.
I'll go out to you.
Sorry, I got nothing.
You got nothing?
Dick's on now, too.
Okay. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You want to take over, Mr. Crumbs?
Yeah, for a little while, I'm having a marginal day here, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, okay.
Um, so you've approved the agenda, you've approved the minutes, so we'll move on to citizens comments.
That is correct.
Item is not on the agenda.
I see no hands.
We don't see any hands up on Zoom.
I don't.
Not on Zoom.
So, so we're gonna move on to Lions Club request to use Crystal Beach.
I make a motion that we allow Lions Club to use Crystal Beach for the fishing derby. Doesn't say when it's held.
It does.
Uh, February 14th and 15th, 2026.
Second line down, Mary Lee. On my paper.
What they want.
We don't have that one.
Oh, I was going off this.
They want to have access to it starting February 6th until February 16th.
So add the 6th to the 16th to my motion.
I got a second?
Second. I'm gonna recuse myself on this one.
All in favor?
This, discussion. Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. Any discussion on this motion?
I don't know if anybody here can represent the Lions Club, but are they gonna be plowing that out during that timeframe? Usually Stan Patch gets ahold of me and says they want it, they, they keep it plowed out, don't, the town crew didn't need to do that, I just haven't heard from anybody, whether they're gonna do that or not, so.
I can follow up on that if you'd like me to.
No, I could do it, I just didn't know somebody heard. I, I can follow up with Stan.
I think it's the board of directors meeting, that he did mention that he would be doing that.
Okay.
But I was suspicious.
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up on that.
And then is the beach unlocked at that time period anyway?
Once fishing started, last the board had made that call that, um, once Rob said, yeah, it's good, then we'll unlock it. But because if they are gonna, if they have to plow it, um, we can either give them a key, or we can leave it open, but it, I'm not sure when fishing's gonna start, so.
Right.
Yeah, uh, it'll be open to accommodate it anyway.
So now I'll throw the question, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I guess, who seconded that?
I did.
Rob recused himself.
I recused myself.
Thank you.
Rec. Department update, Micah, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Select Board. I hope we had a really happy Thanksgiving, and yet thankful to be here. I have a recreation update for December, it was already December. Um, so, we are in our second week of youth basketball, and I'm here also with some revenue updates on that, um, for each of those programs, the gross revenue for the clinic, we, it was about 1,260. Um, the girl's basketball, a little bit, um, slightly smaller, turn, turnout compared to the clinic, but still more than the boys, it's $250. Um, and then about $500 for the boys, so total gross revenue for those is 2,0410. Um, our bay expenses, we're looking at for that, are the uniforms that have been ordered, but we have not come in yet, referees, and then building expenses, as well as some equipment in there. So, that's youth basketball.
How much was the revenue from the girls?
The girl's basketball revenue was 650.
Okay.
Um, pickleball remains strong here at the rec center, we had a pickleball clinic that was led by volunteers on November 22nd, um, we had 15 people attend that, with a gross revenue of $270. Um, winter pickleball is also really strong, with offering it six days a week, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 9:30 to 11:30, um, Sunday is from 9 to 11, Wednesday is from 6:30 to 8:30, um, and then Friday is from 6:30, um, sorry, 6 to 8. Um, and almost all those slots are getting filled, which is terrific. Um, one of the things that I put down on those boards is that we are in discovery, I've scheduled a meeting with Martha, Mary, and Lori, to kind of get some suggestions on ways that we could potentially look to improve the pickleball program. Um, that meeting is right now scheduled for Thursday. Um, so, some of the challenges that we're looking at with those meetings, what we're looking at the meeting is a combination of the pricing, um, right now we're charging a fee of $5 for resident for a day, or $10 for non-resident, or a monthly pass for $15 and $20. Um, so looking at the costs, and then also potential registration methods, right now, um, playtime scheduler is getting used, but there's talks about potential of looking at other ways that could be used along with takeout. We have started a partnership with the Slate Valley Unified School District and their special ed. department, um, they have a career readiness program for people that are 18 and older, they start getting them ready for careers, so they're gonna be coming in the building a couple of times a week to help to supplement what Clet is offering with their cleaning, um, which is great, because as I was watching all these basketball players come in, um, the building is starting to get a little bit more use, which is great, but it's also bringing a lot more dirt, so having them as a supplement is gonna be a really great addition that will save us a lot of, of money from paying Clet per fee at a time. Um, I have also been working on a opening and closing checklist for the building, um, we have it hanging up right on the wall outside the door, and basically, anybody who's the first one in the building would fill out that opening checklist, um, anytime that they're the last ones to leave, they would fill out the closing, even if there's a program that might be going on later in the day, if they're the ones who are shutting off the lights, we want them going ahead and doing a closing checklist, um, and we're also introducing the key card, so we know who those last people are, so there's still more accountability for them. Um, an update quickly on the registration software, I've been working very diligently with Christine to, um, start identifying what some of these softwares could look like, and we have identified one that we kind of like, so our next step on that is, we want to show town staff what that looks like, and then we can start opening that up to residents, and eventually we'll, we want to get the, directly doing that from you guys as the select board as well, but we are moving forward that, are, we're projecting and hoping to launch by next fall, with the thought process that we don't want the busy season of spring and summer to be the first time that we're using the software, we want kind of more of a quiet season to ease people slowly into the software, um, and get them used to that before it's a full launch. So, um, what are some of the challenges that we're kind of looking up against, I was, the way I'm viewing a lot of these challenges right now is kind of a scale. Um, on one hand, we need enough money to be able to operate the building, but on the other hand, we're looking at growing the rental, growing and having more activities going on here, and more rentals, and I know there's been a lot of discussion on social media about the rental agreements and the cleaning fees, but we're trying to balance that also off with, we're paying, um, just to turn the lights on and the heat, something like $200 a day in here, just to, um, without any staff, without any equipment, so we're trying to look to, how can we recuperate those costs by also, by also generating interest in the building. Um, so that's one thing we're kind of jumping right now. Um, we had to cancel a couple of programs, as I said, with some of those challenges, with those rental agreements, um, we did have a quilling class and a wreath making class, that was gonna be taught by Marty Alexander, um, we, she, um, we charged her $95 for each of those days for an hour and a half program, um, and we found out that she had charged $15 a person, and got four people for quilling, and seven people for wreath making. Um, so, the wreath making would have made that revenue, while, um, the quilling would have been a little bit slower on here. Um, and unfortunately, we also had to cancel the game night, which is scheduled for Friday, we just didn't have enough people sign up for that to make it, probably, to run. Um, the next slide, we're looking at some of the scales on here, um, right now we're kind of weighing, we, how to figure out how to staff this building, as more programs are going on in here, I'm only in here 40 hours a week, and so we're trying to figure out how to supplement those additional hours that we're looking to open the building and have, have people in here, um, either through part-time staff or volunteers, so again, um, we're kind of weighing those kind of options, and our big next step on that is, I have a meeting with our attorney tomorrow, to ask him some questions, and this is one of those things I want to ask him about, is what kind of the legal ramifications of having volunteers run the building versus part-time staff. Um, so, and then to kind of close, I'm looking at the future projects, um, that meeting with Lori and Mary for Thursday, um, I have, I'm working on trying to schedule a meeting with the summer camp staff, believe it or not, I know it's, what is it, 40 degree outside in work, but we're already starting to kind of think about what summer could look like, and then, um, trying to recruit those volunteers and part-time staff potentially, and then the registration software, and looking for more. Um, I'm happy to take any questions, I know I kind of give you a lot of heat tonight, but that's kind of what we're looking at.
No questions?
You got a question, Mer?
I do have one question, probably, uh, Mike's probably better suited to answer this, the playground equipment at Dewey Field, um, as you said, summer's gonna be here before we know it, what do we, can you refresh us on that, where are we at with funding and equipment?
Uh, funding wise, the, the board had used ARPA to pay 25,000, I think, all total, uh, there was $8,000 in, um, funding already sitting in, or, I'm sorry, not 8,000, there was 795 sitting in there as a carryover from years ago, and then there was 8,000 that was carried over from previous budgets, and then plus the money that the, the select board authorized for the ARPA. So, I did some research on the, on this stuff, and because it goes over our, it has to go with the bid, that's what the bottom line is, because of the cost, that's our bid policy, so, Micah, uh, Mary, Mary McIntyre had given me, um, some information, Micah gave me some more information, plus I had somebody did a cold call and stopped by, they're Vermont company, so, um, the RFP, I have to complete the RFP, it's not done yet, um, because I started looking into this, and for what we have for money, you're not gonna get a whole bunch, just to set expectations, that 20, $30,000, or let's say high-end, is not gonna get very much in playground equipment, in today's economy. So, it's a, it's, we, we tried to, I looked at stuff that was gonna be, is it all-inclusive, is it gonna allow, uh, parents that have children with special needs, or, um, any kind of handicap to be able to use this stuff, and when you start getting into that, the price jumps up astronomically. So, that's what I have to work through with a vendor, is like, where, where are we gonna land at cost for something that, that will fit in our space and our budget? So, I just have to finish the RFP and get it out there.
Okay, good, I'm just hoping that we could have that equipment on the ground in April, maybe that's being too optimistic.
I think it probably will be, but at least having it ready for construction season by, into May timeframe to, um, and reach out to, uh, volunteers like Casellas that have offered before, to see if they're willing to help out with the prepping of the ground and, you know, putting the stuff up.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping, if we could get that before those companies really get into their big construction time, we could probably, uh, get that erected, whatever it is that we can afford for now, hopefully it's expandable in the future, or maybe just something small is all that's needed.
Yeah, it'll be bigger than what was there.
All we need is a tree, a rope, and a tire.
Well, you're, you're right, you know, I think that it's easy, sometimes it seems like the world is run by kids, you know, and you need to have something really elaborate, you know, if we had a swing in a jungle gym, that's gonna cover a lot of it.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what you're looking at, you get the slide, a swing, and a couple of things to climb on, and that's probably gonna end up being what we'll be able to afford. I, I did talk to Micah about the, um, the Walmart grant, we're looking at, um, it's a pretty simple process, but, um, has, to get the money, you gotta actually submit the, the request, so, we talked about it today, about looking at that for some of these, because this only can be like, anywhere from 2,500 to $5,000, so, it, it helps, but it's not gonna get us this big Taj Mahal.
Yeah, I don't think we need that, I think, uh.
Something safe.
Yeah, something safe that can occupy kids while the siblings are at a ballgame, or whatever it is, I think that, you know, as you buy your kids the most elaborate toys and they want to play with the wooden spoons in the kitchen.
Sometimes simple. Get a lot of wooden spoons for them, but.
Or they sit in the box that.
Simple will be more than adequate, I believe.
The, we have to talk, still talk to the league, Wade Mousour is our loss consultant for the league, um, about, because the, I talked to Jeff Davidson, our highway foreman, about, um, we had some tires, and putting the stuff in where they can climb on it, but I just want to make sure that, leg out for any legal purposes, that we don't put ourselves at risk, uh, for liability, so, but the, the highway crew said, hey, we'll come down, we'll bury the tires, and they can climb on, I mean, so.
Yeah, I think that stuff's great.
Yeah, it's just, and we get plenty of tires, so, if something gets, happens to one, we won't take.
Nowadays, you probably have to bury new tires to play on, used probably isn't good enough anymore.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see that done this summer.
That's the goal, um, it's just been getting it up on the radar, so, if anybody wants to stop by the town office and sit down with me, I can go over the RFP with them. It's pretty much all written, it's just fine tuning it.
I don't have any other questions, I like your report, it was clear and concise, nicely done.
Thank you.
Rob?
What's up?
I had a, I made a comment at the last select board meeting, after the rec folks left, you weren't here, that a year ago, I agreed to take this building off the market, but my informal agreement was with the Friends of Rec and the Rec Department, is that I would get regular financial numbers, expenses and revenue, and they assured me I would. I might have got it once, in a year's time, that's not acceptable. I have a fact, a bunch of taxpayers out there that are looking to me, they come to me, asking, are we getting anywhere close, and I can't answer them. So I don't know if, yeah, if you want to speak to that, Mike?
I would, because you asked me to follow up on that, and so I, I did follow up with Andy Vermilier, and they had applied for, there was one, uh, grant that was applied for, they didn't get that one, and then Mary Drogi, um, I believe they were doing on one for walking in the building, I don't think they were the same ones, um, I think they were two different ones.
Okay.
And I haven't heard on that one yet, but the town was the pass-through, so we should hear something, um, and I haven't heard anything yet. Uh, that's it for the, you asked about grants.
Yeah, because they said they were handicapped by having this building on the market, they couldn't go after grants, so that was kind of part of the question, is how many grants have they gone after in a year's time?
The best I know is just two, at this, one from Friends, and then I think Mary, I think they did it through the Recreation Commission, um, because we did a letter of support for the, for them to do that.
That's correct, that was the small AARP grant was through the Rec Commission.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
So, that's it so far, um, and then, I, I have some concerns, and I'm not sure if this is the venue, um, but it's about rec and the building, um, I, I'd met with, um, Mickey McClure last Friday, now that we're landlords, and we have the fire district in here, there are issues that are creeping up on us that, besides the heat, but ice coming off the roof, it hit somebody, opening one of the doors, and, which could open up a whole host of liability issues for us if someone were to be seriously injured by that. So I had Mickey here to look at what he can do in the, in the short term to stop the water from, it's off where the fire district goes in, right around the corner here, um, but the water's coming off the roof, it's a big icicles hanging down, there's water frozen on the ground, so I told him to start going in through the front door, and if they need a key to go, I talked to Allison Harvey, and said, pass it on to, to carry that, they can get keys, we'll get them in so they're not gonna get hurt until we can get this resolved, and the same with this back door here coming into the library for Vermont Sports Medicine. Um, there's, there's a, the roof is pitched right to the door, um, we're talking about building a little, uh, roof, so that when the snow or the water comes off the roof, it'll shed to the sides, because we also have to put a handicap ramp there, and I don't want the water, or splashing of water to get on the ramp and turn that into some luge run. So, we're working on that, um, if you notice it's warmer in here right now, Mick, or Paul was it, come in, they found that there was a circuit breaker off that was powering this one, um, he's well aware of it, uh, we met about the, the handicap bathroom, which one is the best one to try to, uh, put an ADA compliant bathroom in, so Mickey was gonna follow up with, uh, Division of Fire Safety, because we, we're, the, the width of the room is about seven inches short, and too narrow, so, we're gonna see if they'll allow us to, you know, still use that bathroom to, to do that. It's a one toilet, one sink bathroom, so it's the best one to convert, rather than take one that has two or three toilets, um, and sink, to multiple sinks, and gut it just to put in one, one toilet, so, uh, that's on, that's ongoing. Uh, we ordered some runners, Micah's gotta get those down to help save the floors, uh, so that we can preserve them as much as possible. Um, I met virtually with, um, a lady named Emily from Efficiency Vermont, and they're gonna come in and do a survey here, it looks like for $0 to $250 a light, that's the initial quote, to replace the ones in the gym with LED, the LEDs, and get rid of those fluorescent bulbs, because electricity in this building right now is $1,400 a month. And the only thing that goes on in here is the gym use, and Micah, you know, being in here, so, just, we can save some money by putting in the LED lighting, and in the hallways, I talked to Mickey about that, ADA compliance, the lights have to come on automatically, so, uh, we're, that's, that's an easy, that's an easier one, but if we can get the money from, through Efficiency Vermont to put in the lighting, um, or, or reduce cost to it, that's the way to go. So, just.
Are there any grants for solar for public buildings?
I'm not sure for public buildings, um, but Efficiency Vermont, I, I did talk to Efficiency Vermont about heat pumps a little while, a while back, um, and there were some incentives on that as well, but they just increased the incentives for the lighting is one of them, um, because of, they're trying to use some money that's, got its sunsets, so they've upped what we can get.
Help them there.
So I said, sometimes, being at the end of the line works out to your advantage, but it's not always, but it could, in, in this case, it could help us, and, but I will talk to them about solar, especially as the roof, as we get closer to the roof being replaced, that maybe that's the time to integrate the solar onto the roofs. Uh, I talked to Mickey McClure about the, the air, the heat exchanger, or the air exchanger in the roof, and, uh, he said that he would do some investigation on that, because it's sagging, and it may need some shoring up from inside, uh, so that it doesn't come through the roof, or cause, you know, leaking problems and stuff like that, so, he said he would get up, it's a, it's a pretty tight quarter to get up in there, um, so, we'll have to get, uh, the smaller version of somebody up in there, but, um, that's, to me, that's one of the biggest concerns I have, is if that starts leaking down inside the building, it's gonna come through the roof, it's gonna, we're gonna have mold problems, whatever it might cause, but we need to get that looked at as well. Um, so, and Paul's catching up on thermostats and, and, um, these heat exchangers, the air actuators that they can't get parts for, they're gonna, next, in the spring, summertime, replace them with 24 volt, and replace the thermostats with 110 volt, so that, um, it'll come on when it's supposed to, so, and heat will come out. So, those are the big things, uh, that's on the building updates.
Just had one more question, and maybe you guys are doing an R and D, how can we be transparent on who's renting this building? I had a taxpayer I talked to last night, and they said, are you renting to anybody? I said, yeah, we're renting to this one, and this one's on, on the market to come in there, and I probably said more to them than I should have, because we haven't got them signed up, but, I'm, this is kind of a question for you, Mike, how do we be transparent, saying, oh yeah, we're renting out to the water district, and they're gonna rent out to these people, can we, can we get that out there?
Yeah.
So, there's people out there thinking, you guys aren't doing anything, we, we haven't heard of anybody renting the building or any of that.
Let me think about how to market that out of there, but.
Just so they.
Tell them report.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're coming, it's once a year kind of thing, but, um, let me, give me, let me give them some thought in how to market it.
You know what I'm talking about.
Not market it, but, um.
Present.
Kind of thing. In terms of recreation transparency on what we have for going on in the building with rentals, that's the hope to include in the registration software, that somebody can just go onto the registration site and look, is facility, is open or is enclosed, and if it was important to the select board, that it'd be transparent, we could probably list what that rental was.
Yeah.
More specific.
Okay.
And anytime you eventually wanted to, and said, hey, can you give me the report of what building usage looks like for the month, we can give you that report.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the stuff that Mike is looking at is far more, uh, advanced than HagoV as far as it's generating reports and, and ease of, ease of use, both on the front, public facing side and on the backside of it, um, so, that's why I encourage them to start looking at certain, or, uh, different, um, companies and what they provide, uh, because it's just, doesn't, it doesn't allow us to do things like report, generate reports, and, and without a lot of hoops to jump through, you know, lots of clicks on the mouse, let's put it that way. Um, but, yeah, I'd like to be able to share, uh, I think when. lots of clicks on the mouse, let's put it that way. Um, but, yeah, I'd like to be able to share, uh, I think when, when Bo first started, they had, had, their report had all the revenues up to, up to date, and I, I talked, worked with Micah to come back to that as well. Um, because it's lightning when you start looking at what the cost of the building is, and that's just the basic costs, and then with rentals in here, and you can generate forty thousand dollars in rentals to pay, pay a ninety something thousand dollar annual bill, it eases the pain a little bit, and then, then Micah would be able to show what the programming is bringing in, in addition to those longer term leases or rentals. Because it, we're never gonna, I, I say never, it, it's a long time, um, probably in my lifetime, um, to get to fifty thousand dollars just in programming, that's, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be monumental. I think that it's gonna take time to get there, and I don't think we're gonna get there, you know, in the next two or three years, but, um, we have, we, we can't stop, we have to keep, trying to build it out, trying to get, get people in here, but I think pickleball was, was it, like fifty-nine hundred dollars a year, something like that? I can't remember what it was. Um, but they, they're in here four to six days a week, um, and if they bring in, and don't quote me on the fifty-nine hundred, I just, just a number stuck in my head, let's just say ten thousand to round it, a number out. Um, and you're talking a ninety something thousand dollar total bill, we're, now we're talking one tenth, one ninth of, of the total cost, so, but programming, it has to be, it'd have to be pretty robust programming, um, to, to raise a lot of money that, you know, through that. Um, but with the rentals in here, that seems to, will close the gap a little bit. So, I think, I mean, for transparency sake, um, the, the fire district pays eight hundred dollars a month. Triple net, so that's everything, um, minus their own, like Comcast and, you know, phone and stuff like that, but, but heat, electricity, all that stuff, water, sewer. And then you start talking bigger company, or bigger organizations like Vermont Sports Medicine, which we haven't signed a contract with, but we're just hammering out details at this point. Um, they want to come in here, but it's just timing is one of the big things, when, when they can do it. They're closing their brand in office, or have closed it. Um, they couldn't get PTs is what I was told, so, um, this building, because they're expanding down here, is gonna open up more uh, space for them if they can get the PTs, um, in this building, so. It's, it's good for Castleton to keep them here, um, and, uh, maybe expand it at the same time, but.
Yeah, everything about the building is good for town. You know, it's gonna keep a business here, um, offer recreation and, and different opportunities, you know, rental agreements for all the things we've talked about, birthday parties, but, so it's a combination of offsetting some of the expenses and getting as many residents as we can here to enjoy the benefits of having a rec center.
Totally agree. I, I ordered some, uh, furniture to be able to put in here so we can have, we can use those rooms, besides having those little, I don't know, little kids' desks, um, uh, so if we, if somebody want to have a meeting in here or a party, we, and the carts at the, the chairs and the, um, the tables will go on so we can move them around out of the room, so they're not in the way. Um, but it'll be a rub on some people, and no doubt, but it's hard to please everybody all the time anyway. Um, but the rooms that are, if we ever got to a point where there's more and more coming in here, some of these rooms that get used less than a dozen times a year, we have to, have to reevaluate what we do with them. It's, uh, if it's not, it's not producing then, and somebody else wants to use it that would produce, we have to take a hard look at that.
Right.
It might make some people angry or upset, and we'll deal with it and we'll try to talk through it and work it out, but, um, it's not Burger King.
Can I, can I pressure both of you to get factual numbers by town meeting? Like, come in and this is what the building's costing against a year, this is what we're making, we're bringing in at the time, at least by town meeting.
Yes, I can.
Has anyone rented the kitchen for a party or anything besides myself?
Yes, um, there was a lady that was making soap in there, um, making goat soap, uh, that was, it was used like two or three times. Um, then there was another one that was used for a meeting, uh, gathered.
Cause that, it's just perfect for a birthday party, kid's birthday party or something.
There were a couple last year that used, utilized the kitchen and rented the gym, and I think it was very successful for both sides.
Paul Culpo from the university, when he brings his clinic in, basketball clinics in here, that's a, that's eighteen hundred dollars a week. That's not, that's pretty good. So, you know, and again, this is where the, the communication comes in with people that are using it, is if he comes in here and wants to use it for a week and we have to say, pickleball, you're gonna have to sh- adjust your schedule, then that's what we're gonna have to do. Um, we, we've accommodated it for, I think this will be the third year if he comes in. Um, but, you know, it's, it's good for, a place for those kids to be able to come in and have their clinic and stuff like that, but I think we can probably work it out, um, without everybody getting.
Is that just one week?
No, he'll, he has it multiple, but it's, I think it's two weeks maybe, I don't remember off the top of my head, but, um, it was, it was long, long days, um, but it was eighteen hundred dollars a week, so, and he wasn't in here every single day.
Mary, did you have a question?
I did. Um, Mike, did I hear you say that for the summer, what are the pickleball fees?
The pickleball fees as of right now, I just, I'm sorry, here, um, as of right now. I think it was five dollars for a resident, ten dollars for a non-resident, and I think if I'm, if I do this correctly.
Fifteen and twenty by the month.
For, for a monthly pass.
So that hasn't changed, that's odd, because I knew that that's what we were talking about.
Yep. Yeah, that's what the current rates are.
There was a change considered, but we decided not to do that until we had more information, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we, uh, talked with Micah, um, that we're gonna keep everything status quo for right now. There's a couple changes, but like, no, no major muscle moves gonna happen right now.
Part of the thought on a lot, a lot of change, I thought I'm gonna talk to Mary and Laura more about this during the meeting, but I'm not looking to make any changes to the HAGOV open, um, like, uh, click on the scheduler until we can get the new registration software. I feel like making a change and then making a change, another change again, once we get software is gonna be confusing to people. I think if we just, if we try to work to making that change once we get the software, it's gonna be a much smoother path.
I would agree with that. Anything more on rec before we move on?
Oh, Mary's got her hand up, Dick, I don't know if you can see.
Okay, I can't see the audience the way the camera's set right now.
I'll let you know. I'll back, I'll back it out. No, she's going to the podium.
So, um, Bob, just to answer your question, so, I don't have all the figures for, for Friends, but, remember that we've done fundraising at the earmark for the gym, and that's not going anywhere, that's still earmarked for the gym, and that's fifty-six thousand dollars just waiting. So, we're looking to do more fundraising. Saturday night I had a text from somebody with an idea, a very valid idea, so, you know, we're progressing. Um, Mike and I are actively discussing where our thermometer can go to keep track, so to be very visible to people. Um, I think that's important. Uh, it's not just a Friends fundraiser, this is a community fundraiser. And we've got a lot of people invested, so, um, we need to keep going with it, and, uh, as far as pickleball goes, we also have to remember that they've been our main volunteers for most of the, the fundraising here and in general, and as far as, um, the way the fees have been set, nobody has complained about moving out of the way for, for rentals. Everybody totally understood with, um, the basketball team, so, um, and all the time there's, there's more things, but whatever rec, excuse me, whatever Friends has raised, and whatever Friends has bought, is money that the town has, had to put in, like when we, we bought one hundred and fifty chairs now. And that was nothing that came out of the town, that was, well, Friends from this community raised and putting into this building, so. That's, and I, and I don't know how you put a price tag on the volunteerism.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Anything else on rec before we move on from the board?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, and we're gonna move on to the highway department update. Is, uh, Jeff available, or are you doing this, Mike?
Uh, he's not available, I'm doing it.
Okay. Well, I read the report, pretty concise, pretty, uh, pretty comprehensive. So, do we need to go over this, or does the board just wanna go straight to questions? What's the pledge of the board on this?
I read it, I don't need to go over it.
So, questions for the town manager?
I've got one.
Well, so do I, but you go first, Bob.
Well, mine's not very serious. Why is the over-the-rail mower sitting behind the town office and it's been there sitting behind the town office?
Cause I was using it, then it, it, the batteries died, I was going to use it, but the ba- the battery's dead on it, so they gotta come down and jumpstart it.
Okay, okay. That, see, that's all I had, Dick. I don't know what yours was.
I just wanted to know what the, uh, what the forecast is for getting the sixty-five hundred Chevy back on the road.
Uh, just, it's hometown to Ross, whatever it is now, um, in Way Hall to, uh, diagnose it and fix it. It's, uh, it's under warranty, but, um, they just gotta, they had diagnosed it, and as of today, I didn't have an update to, uh, of what they've, honestly, I don't, I don't have an update whether it's there or it's not there yet. They were going to bring it there, um, but, uh, I'm not, so I'm not sure if it's there yet, but I'll follow up, um, with Jeff and I can let you know.
Yeah, please do that, I was a little disappointed, it's first day of use and kinda like decided not to work anymore.
Yeah, same with the, the tandem, the, one of the levers on that tandem's was not oper- it was not operational either for the new plow system.
Okay, any more questions on highway before we move on? Okay, if the board's all good, then we'll move on and we'll talk about the town report.
Christine had, was gonna produce something for you, she came to me at the end of the day and just said that she didn't get a chance to complete it, but she, one of the, so I, I had, I had some stuff to bring up to the board is, one of the things that wasn't discussed was what, what the cover, what we, what you'd like to see on the cover of it.
The sixty-five hundred Chevy.
That's.
With the plow on it.
Yeah. A, a new wood chipper. The, uh, so, the Ethan Allen and Cat, for the, for the timeframe of this report, Ethan Allen and Castleton was, uh, was something that happened in town, um, we've already addressed the, who it would be dedicated to, and I believe if I go back in time, I think the senior center was on the cover of, uh, one of those at one point as well, but I can verify that. But I'm not sure if you, the board had any ideas of, or something that happened that, and we've done the lake, um, fireworks, the sailboats, uh, we did during COVID was, um, essential employees, so, but I'm, if, if it's just something that the board thought was, uh, appropriate to put on it, we, we'll start working on it and try to find whatever photos or whatever we need, story.
I would throw out a picture of the new tandem Platra. You know, I think these are big expenditures that the taxpayers are funding, it'd be nice for them to see them.
Maybe the ladder truck too, can we kinda split the page?
We didn't, we didn't do anything on the ladder truck, um, for the fire department, but we do have the sixty-five hundred and we have the, the, the new tandem. We could do a collage type thing on the front that shows the, um, we'll have to take a picture while it's at the, at the garage probably.
Edit the chain out, where it's being towed. And a skid steer, I mean, these are all pieces of equipment that taxpayers have funded, and, uh, you know, maybe I'm wrong about that. I, I would like to see that stuff and say, hey, this is, this is where our money's going.
I, I think it'd be cool, um, with a little cap, you know, the, yeah, they'll be on the inside, there'll be on the cover, there'll be a story about what's on the cover.
Yeah, updating our, keeping our infrastructure updated, you know, serving the community.
That's what the board wants, I'll certainly.
Well, that's just my suggestion.
That could be added into.
Could it all be a line, a lineup of all this new equipment? Just put it all in a line.
Yeah, yeah, a collage of it all, you know, there, it's hard to get it all at one time, you know, it's all out being used and.
That's what I do, is I just see individuals and, and collage it, and then on the inside put a story and put the pricing, you know, when it was purchased and the price, and thank the voters for supporting it, that kind of thing.
Yeah, so they know that the infrastructure is, is good and getting better.
And we got the new sewer truck, we got all kinds of stuff that was purchased over the last year.
And that make the cover pretty big, you know, like.
It's, yeah, be a one of those, uh.
The cover folds out, it's the back, it's the back.
Well, if you do a collage like we did last year at the lake, I think that might be a good way to do that.
First town report for the center.
Smaller photographs all done as a collage, like last year, our town report had four or five images of, uh, primary of Lake Bobbazine on it.
Fireworks and ice fishing and swimming and, yeah, if that's what you want, I can certainly do that, it'd be easy.
Why not?
I'd be using some of the other things that might get thought of, cause I know where everything is, we take pictures of it.
Well, it's nice, you know, nice pictures are nice, but I think from a business standpoint, if you're gonna look at the town report, hey, where did our money go?
Yeah.
This is where it is, went to good use.
The other thing I think we should include in there is something about the local history and the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of, uh, Ethan Allen and Castleton, I think that's something significant that we should at least make, make note of. Somewhere in the town report, it doesn't have to be on the cover, but I think it's worthy of note.
So, just so the board's aware, Tom Hughes did the write-up for that, he already, we already have it, and it, so, in that center of the town report, when you open it up, both, the whole page, both pages will be pictures and a little write-up about Ethan Allen and Castleton. So that's already programmed for in there as part of the.
Well, that works for me.
Part of the, um, historical society stuff.
So, anything else on the town report?
Uh, just the timeframes, so we, today I met with Nedra, who's leaving on the nineteenth, still need to appoint someone. But nobody stepped up as so far, but just, I digress for a second, but, once the nineteenth hits, we're, we're trying to figure out through the Secretary of State's office right now what we gotta do, because the vault gets closed, town office and, town clerk's office is open. So we're trying to get that resolved. Uh, but anyway, going, um, what was the question again? Town report?
Submissions for the town report.
So thirty days prior to the, the third of March is when you can hold your, uh, informational meeting. And so Christine's, I called Mary Dearborn today, who does the printing, um, to get a date, firm up the date of when she needs our draft by, so that she can print it, give us the proof back, make any changes that's needed and get it printed in time for the informational meeting. So we're, so we're, we're trying to work them backwards off from March third, but then we also have to talk to the printer to find out what their dates are, so that we somewhere meet in the middle, so we meet all these deadlines. Cause ten days prior, we gotta have, the audit has to be completed and posted, the audit findings, so we're, we're working through that right now, Dick, um, but, more to follow. Uh, but she, Christine will need everybody's write-ups in the beginning of January, so she can put it all together, format it, cause it'll, and something will dribble in late and it'll change the formatting and she's gonna have to reformat the thing, so, uh, we're shooting for like the end of the first week of January to have everybody's submissions in, their final submissions. And she put out an email the other day of the people that were, hadn't turned stuff in yet, and, um, uh, that generated some emails, that people, people sent stuff in, so we're not as bad off as I originally thought, but, um, so, yeah, that's, that, that's what I know at this point.
Have we come up with a date for our town meeting?
So we're trying to, so, no, uh, answer, first of all, no. Um, after today when we spoke, now we know where we need to, the week of the sixteenth is what we're reaching out, we. Um, after today, when we spoke, now we know where we need to, the week of the sixteenth is what we're reaching at, we reached out to the university to see the week of the sixteenth, if there's some...
February sixteenth?
Yeah, cause it's, it's in between select board meetings. And I think, Mary, didn't you ask it to not be on Mondays?
I prefer not a Tuesday, but I...
Oh, Tuesday?
I can do it.
Okay, well, I, I, today, I told Christine, I thought you'd said Mondays, but, um, I'll correct that to Tuesdays.
It's just someone else, I have to bingo for the Legion. I can do it.
Well, we're gonna say the week of the sixteenth, um, and we'll say, try to stay away from a Tuesday, but we don't know yet the date, and probably stay away from a Friday.
So, we, do we have any available dates for that week yet, Mike, or is that still pending?
As of today, uh, we had not received a response from Lori Phillips back from the university.
Okay.
Cause they're saying that it won't be in the auditorium in Jeffords or the other one, I forgot the name of the auditorium, um, it'll probably be in the student center.
Which one's that? Is that the one that's in the back?
Uh, Mary, Mary, you know which one, which room they'd be talking about? Mary, do you know?
You said the student center, Mike?
I believe that's what Lori said, I'm not looking at the email, but...
The email. So, that would be the...
Hi, yeah, the campus center is, um, would be the seventeen-eighty-seven room, is probably what she's talking about.
Yeah, that's, we told her a hundred people.
Yeah, it's a nice room. It's not staged like Jeffords Auditorium or, or, uh, Herrick Stafford is, but it's a nice room. I think it has the most up-to-date AV equipment in terms of having it also be hybrid.
That was what Lori had said, she wanted to, uh, to use that room to have the best audio. More to follow.
I think some things have the audio here.
Yeah, I can't hear what he's saying, but...
Cause it's echoing.
Can we just...
I think if Mary mute, if Mary mutes, it'll be fine.
Mary, can you mute? There, that went away, it was, it was just a feeding back from Mary, um, when she had her microphone on. So, more, more to follow, Dick, on the, on the venue, but Christine had reached out today to Lori Phillips.
Okay, well, I, I think if it's a seventeen-eighty-seven room, I've been to a couple of functions there, that's probably large enough, and I'm sure we could make it work.
Right.
So, just to recap for everyone's benefit, we have to have that informational meeting within thirty days of the town meeting, was it the polling date, or the, the, um, first Tuesday in March, whatever calendar date that is. And then we have to warn that informational meeting, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, like, two weeks prior to that meeting date.
Now, they changed, they changed it from last year and it was, oh, God, off the top of my head, I'm trying to remember. Uh, I, I, I'm gonna misspeak, so I'd rather not, I'll, I'll confirm, but, um, that, last year, there was a, a little extra layer added in that's not in there this year, so, um, Nedra's, I spoke with Nedra today, and, uh, she recommended I call the secretary's, or call VLCT. If they can't answer my question, to call the Secretary of State's office, so Christine and I had a chat after that, and she knows what she needs to do and to get that, uh, timeline built, so everyone knows.
Okay, we still have time to get that right, so... Anything else on the town report?
Not from my side, not from my end.
Then we'll move on to talk about fireworks. There was some, um, talk about co-mingling with other towns or joining with other towns for a bigger show, is that something that you wanna talk about tonight, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanna throw it out, um, to the board that I was approached by Joe Gunter, uh, town manager in Fairhaven, um, and I, then I spoke to, um, Paul Donaldson, the town manager in Poltony, at one of the Rutland County Solid Waste District meetings. And the price of fireworks is predicted to go way up because of tariffs, and then it's also the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the nation, so they're predicting that fireworks are gonna be in high demand. So, when everything's in high demand, usually the price goes up. So, uh, they, they asked me, um, if I would come to the select board and see if there's any appetite, I guess, for, uh, finding a venue that the three towns could converge on and cost share in the fireworks. And I did tell them right off the bat, I said, it's, I think you're gonna have a fight to pull it away from the lake because of the boat parade and the people out there, but I, on the same, in the same breath, it was really crowded this, this year. People were parking in the roads, I mean, in the roads, and you couldn't get from north of North Road, both sides had cars parked on it, and it was one-way traffic. And if we get that at the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our nation, um, there's no way Crystal Beach can support that. And if other towns don't do it because of the price, then we could get that fallout from Fairhaven and Poltony or whoever to come into Castleton. And Pete Mantella will tell you, it was dangerous last year with the amount of cars that are parked in the road. Somebody parked right in, in the road in front of the, um, the lake house and walked out, walked away. So, I said, Pete, I said, tell them, just tell them, don't even ask, just get it out of there. Um, so cars had to go around it, um, to, to get out, to, you know, to get by, so I expect that it's gonna be worse this year, um, with the, being the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And if nobody else is doing this because of the, of the cost, and I have, I have an email into DJ Montague from, um, North Star Fireworks on what the cost is gonna be for what we, what we normally pay for. It was thirteen thousand, I think I put it down there, it's like thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, uh, last year for...
And the town paid for all of that last year?
Yeah, usually there's a small donate, there, there might have been a donation that came in from the LBA that I don't know about, but, um, you know, I think the last time they made, that I know about, was two years ago, was a thousand or fifteen hundred. So, they used to do it all. But it, it hasn't been, and it's on the ballot, um, if it gets shot down, once I know the price, and I, and I put the price on the ballot, or on the, uh, the budget, and you, you know, approve to put the budget forward to the voters, if it goes up substantially, it might get shot down.
Right.
And then we're gonna have no fireworks.
Would be great if we could cost share, but, I mean, if we...
Where, where could we have it?
That's the problem. If we cost share and say, hey, it's gonna be in Poltony, people aren't gonna, or Fairhaven, people aren't gonna be happy, and I'm sure the residents of those communities would feel the same way.
Yeah, well, when I talk into, and, and Joe Gunter brought this before their select board at their last meeting, I haven't spoken to him since then, um, but one of the things of the concern was, they don't have any venues either. I mean, you get the, the, behind the grade school, you know, the big fields down there, but parking's gonna become a, an issue pretty quickly. Uh, we had talked about approaching the university, cause, um, it won't be, I'll be out of session, you know, the, you know, the summer, like, whatever, the Boston Crusaders or whoever might be there, um, but they have more parking, uh, to be able to do this. So, it's just something I wanted to talk to the select board about, saying, do you want me to even entertain it?
The college would, you're right, would probably be a better venue, would bring some people into downtown Castleton, you know, the merchant would benefit, um, if the college would go for that. I know they put on substantial fireworks displays in the past up by the old president's house, I think they launched them.
That's what, that's what we're talking about, launching them, so if you put it in that, from that location, all those parking lots around there would be able to see them.
I could see them from my house when they did that, you can see them a long ways away.
But we might, the, the university, I'll find out what they want, but they might require us to get one-day event insurance, um, so if there's any damage done to their facilities or their, or somebody gets hurt.
They could park on Main Street.
Yeah, I mean, it might be on Main Street.
If the college was in for it, would be nice if those other communities wanted to cost share.
Yeah, and I think that the venue was the, was the, the topic of discussion is like, where do they even have the venue to put the, their fireworks in, um, where people could see it, I guess. You know, the Castle, uh, State University, Vermont State University at Castle, has a lot of open space and parking lots that could fill up and everybody could still see them.
Yeah, you could park both sides of Main Street everywhere in town.
They may not want some, some big thing there, you know, I, I might, if I was them, I might say the same thing, but, um, but I, I won't know unless I ask. But I gotta get the price of the fireworks, um, and then that will help drive some decisions probably by Fairhaven and Poltony, cause if it's really cost prohibitive, they're gonna probably wanna cost share.
You know, have to see what our voters wanna do.
I think if we're gonna cost share with the other communities, though, the, the university is probably the best venue, but they're even willing to entertain the thought. So, let's start with those three things or two things, you gotta talk to Poltony and Castleton, or Poltony and Fairhaven again, then also to the university. And see if it's something that's even worth pursuing.
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start the, the conversation with the university anyway, because if they say no, that's, you know, that's gonna drive decisions anyway.
Right.
And if, and if we can't do it at the university, then I'm really challenged to think of a good venue that would accommodate all three towns in one spot, in any one of the three towns. And if someone's got a great idea, I'd love to hear it.
I mean, Poltony normally does it at their, behind the elementary school, but when you start throwing hundreds and hundreds of more people that could show up there, um, I don't know if they can accommodate it either.
We think maybe the airport in Fairhaven would be the only place in Fairhaven.
Yeah, but the parking is gonna be the issue out there.
Yeah.
Cause there's isolation distance away from the fireworks, so they're gonna have to set those off, off on the runway area probably, and, um, you know, so people can park.
Yeah, yeah. It's a whole lot bigger than Crystal Beach, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, this year, it really was, as, kind of, not crying wolf or anything, but it, it was a really safety hazard up there. It's just the most I've ever seen in seven years of the, seven and a half years I've been here, is, it was crazy.
It went well past the point of being safe, but I think we all agree on that.
I got a question in the audience, Dick?
No, Dick hit the...
Oh, okay.
My, my thought was just if, if all these towns are going to go in on it, we all have, have, um, money invested in the university, so I would think that that would be palatable, more palatable than...
It's gonna be the people that are used to seeing it from the lake in their boat, that's gonna be the rub. If, if, if it costs too much to be able to do it ourselves, I mean, right now, that, we stretch out that display, it's a fifteen-minute display. We stretch it out to twenty to twenty-five, they just slow the cadence down of it, um, and, and that, there's no more fireworks, it's just they slow the cadence down.
Yeah.
So, if, if, if what they predict, what they're predicting holds true, and thirteen thousand goes to more than thirteen thousand five hundred, might not be able to afford it.
Sometimes that's a long display. You know, I mean, you watch, I guess if you're five, it probably isn't, but after you've watched fireworks, year after year after year, you know, you watch five minutes of it and kinda ready for it to be over.
I like Poltonys, cause I can sit on Billy's deck and it's perfect.
Yeah, so, uh...
See what happens.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll come back with you more information, there's, I just wanted to bring it up to see if there was any real resistance right from the get-go, um, so...
I guess the big thing is to find out from North Star what's...
Yeah, the price.
If it's gonna go up to seventeen or eighteen, or, yeah. That's huge.
Or higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, cause those, all these big companies that are gonna be putting on stuff for the celebration of, of the...
Yeah, it's gonna be supply and demand.
Country, so, the little piddly guys like here and North Star, they're gonna...
Yeah, say sorry, guys.
May not even get, be able to get all, what they want, so who knows? Sky's not following yet, but I, I, I'll follow up with you.
So, uh, let's move on to the budget, um, anything new on that, Mike, or are we still pretty much where we were last meeting?
Uh, just a little bit of movement with, uh, like, I got the healthcare, the health insurance, um, the increase is only gonna be five percent, which is less than I thought it would be, so, um, that, that is gonna help a little bit, uh, because it's just a large number overall. Uh, the Consumer Price Index numbers are not out yet, um, so I don't, I don't have those to input in there. One of the things that I, I've worked, I've been working on in the budget was that DPW slack rec, rec roust about and how to fill that in. A lot of it's taken, it's in the, two days or a week in the highway department, two days a week are in rec, um, one day at the, uh, on Fridays at the sewer plant, cause that's been a gripe from the staff down there since I've been around. Um, that they leave, they have to cycle out at ten o'clock in the morning on Friday, one of them does, cause they have to do labs over the weekend, so that they don't get to do stuff that they normally would do, cause there's only one person. So, the sewer, because we control the sewer budget, it's not a lot of money, it's not gonna like, it might change the rate three cents. You know, it's, it's really no, really minimal impact, but for cost, but a good impact on getting work done. And, uh, so, I'm, we're trying to work that out to come back to you with, with that, um, but this is that whole, what I'm just struggling right now is the little nit-noid things that happen and like, gotta find somebody to fix something, I, and it's little. So, the big companies or, or the busy ones aren't gonna...
Yeah, nobody wants to come to do a hundred-dollar job.
Yeah, and, but they have to get done. I mean, there's, there's stuff that hasn't been done at the fire station, at the town office, here's a typical example of the little things that could be taken care of by somebody. So, it, it doesn't look, when you look at the budget, you're gonna see, you'll see an increase, let's say, but what you don't see in the, on the backend of it is what we pay that contractor to come in and do that same thing. So, yeah, we're putting it in the budget, but in the end, somewhere through that process, we're gonna save money from having to have a contractor come and do some of this little piddly stuff. And then one of, out of the highway department, all I did in the highway department is, there was two part-time employees, I reduced it to, well, there's still two, but one of them is this one. And so, and their function is to do the roadside mowing, the, the guardrails and the bridges in the summer. I, that's just the summer, winter time and, and flagging, cause to hire a flagging company now, you're talking fourteen hundred dollars to get a flagger in there for the day. It's crazy money.
For a day.
A day. You know, it's last minute, especially if it's like, hey, we need somebody here tomorrow. It was, uh, what they charged above and beyond the person. So, Jeff says to me, I can't afford to hire these flaggers, so we end up having to use like Bill Harris or Frank, like, you know, these part-time guys that are on the highway and the transfer station, or they pull somebody from the sewer plant. And then they're not doing something, you know, and they're not really being paid to flag. Um, so, this, this fills in some gaps, um, in both operationally, some gaps, and money-wise, it, it should just kinda wash itself out, and that's what I'm trying to show in the budget. Um, that it's not gonna cost us really anymore, I'm reducing a, a purchase service, other purchase services or outside contracting, reducing that and putting it to, to employee that we control, and we can move them around as needed. So, just trying to, trying to work it out, so it's kinda like cost neutral. And some of it goes against the buildings too, cause the, the, the PSB, you know, the safe, public safety building, the town office, um, they have lines for personnel services, we don't normally put things in there. So, what's gonna happen is it's gonna reduce something somewhere, and those are gonna go up, so, but overall, it'll be neutral, but it's, for somebody looking at the budget and they're going, why did town lands go up?
Yeah, it'll come off like maintenance, building maintenance or something like that, probably.
So, they'll, they'll say, why did this all of a sudden, you know, increase whatever, two thousand dollars or four thousand dollars, and they'll have to just be able to talk it away. And I, I mean, I can make a separate thing saying where it all came from and what we, what we took to, I, I can't take everything, cause if we have a bad day and the pipe burst down here, and, um, that might not be something that that person can fix. But they could certainly fix a leaky faucet or a toilet, or, you know, those type of thing, replace a toilet or whatever it might be, um, whereas Paul McClures or, or some other plumbers are gonna charge us a lot more. So, just, just a heads up, that's what I've been working on. Other than that, nothing else really changing the budget at this point. It, I will tell you, after I threw all the numbers in there, it went from four point one to four point seven percent. Like, two hundred and seven thousand dollars, I think it was, over the previous year. I'm trying to get it, trying to get it lower, I'm trying to get down there, um, so, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but it's just, we, we continue to, all these little nit-noid ankle-biter problems that we can't get somebody to fix.
Right, lack of maintenance.
And the lack of, the lack of maintenance ends up, I mean, this, like, we've been hiring Aaron King to paint, this... This person would do the painting, you know, there, there's some things that I might not want him to do, but, um, but overall it could save some money in, uh, uh, on things like that or fixing a hole in the wall and, you know, thing. So whoever gets hired, you know, has to have that skillset to, the handyman type person, not just somebody that we hired and said, we'll train you, cause who's gonna train them?
You gotta hire somebody over sixty, they know how to do everything.
I know, I, I say, I said the fleet's aging as it is, and I'm like, the, the people that you want are the ones that have the life experience and everything and, um, you know, but, you know, it's not really a part-time position, cause we're really, we'd be cutting the hours way down below thirty to get under a part-time, not paying them benefits type thing, so then you don't get, you don't get what you want, or, or what you need. Thirty hours might not cut it. So, it could if we cut the, if I cut the sewer out, but.
Starting point.
What's that?
It's a starting point.
Yeah, and so I'll bring it back to you and you guys can throw darts at me and.
It'd be a nice retirement job for me, only forty hours a week.
There you go, that's it.
Five days a week, that'd be good.
You'd cut down on that.
Yeah, I know, that's what I mean, I'd have a weekend of myself.
You'd still sell Christmas trees on the side.
Yeah, still side hustle.
That's all I had, Dick, unless there's questions from the board.
I have no questions, is the rest of the board all set, or do, do you have something?
I'm all set.
All set.
Good.
I have a, I have a comment, I had an email from a taxpayer asking us if this board would consider not putting forward the reserve account funds, I've been recent in the highway department. And they went on to explain, and they're, they're more fiscally better off than a lot of people I know, so it got my attention, how their retirement fund is only going up minute, but this healthcare cost and this cost, and, and they had like five or six different costs listed, they're not gonna survive. And I don't know how they're gonna survive, and they're very, very nervous. They don't even consider moving out of their house, selling their house and moving away, and like I said, they're not down and out. Like a lot of families in towns, but I don't know how we could even do away with the reserve accounts, because I don't see things getting any better a year from now, and you'd have to have twice as much into the reserve accounts to make up for the, if you leave the reserve accounts out this year, how do you ever catch up?
That's the, that's been the problem, is you, you don't catch up.
Yeah.
Already behind.
But they, they're not gonna make it, they're saying they're not gonna make it, and I.
Bob, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, their, their point specifically was the three extra ballot items we're considering were reserve accounts in general.
No, the, the, the extra money we put in for like the paving and the extra money we put in for the equipment at the highway department, I believe that's what they were talking about. You know how we raised the reserve accounts considerably up?
Yes.
I think those are the accounts they're talking about, I can get more specific with them if, if need be, but.
But those are separate line items.
Yeah, yeah, they're just asking us not.
Taxpayers have the opportunity to approve or not approve.
Yeah, yeah, well, they're afraid there's too many people that will approve them and that's not gonna help their situation out, so.
That, that.
Well, I, I think that we should educate everyone, including ourselves, on just what the impact is of those three items, uh, the yearly tax bill, you know, for a, say a, whatever the average home is, is it three hundred thousand now, maybe? I don't know what the average price of a home is in the town of Castleton now, but it's gotta be north of two hundred by now, right?
North of three, I think.
So let's, let's just say, so what would a homeowner with three hundred thousand dollars a year, those three budget items or articles, what, what would that impact be? Is that something that your accounting staff could figure out for us, Mike?
Yes.
Um, and then we can make sure that somebody knows it's going to be a hundred dollars a year, or fifty dollars a year, or five hundred a year. At this point, I really don't know, but I do know that that's a piece of knowledge that I think all the voters should have.
That would help big time, Dick, yeah, that was one of the other things that, that was one of.
Because I also think that not offering those options to the taxpayers and the voters in town would be irresponsible on our part.
Yep, that, that was one of the other things he said with the reassessment. He didn't say his taxes are doubling, but he made a very big point with the reassessment on his house. He's not gonna make it, he's, they're just not gonna make it, and they're, like I said, I know who it is, I'm not gonna mention any names, but they're more fiscally responsible income-wise than a lot of people that I know. So I just wonder what, what are the other people that are down below him are gonna do? I mean, it's, it, it, it got my attention for sure.
Well, they're probably not the only one, Bob, I'll bet, that.
No, but this one happened to speak up to me.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, the, the people that are silent that, you know, don't say anything.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I think it is important by town, town meeting day, we have the tax rate and we know exactly what that, how that's going to affect a person's, how every budget item is gonna affect a person's taxes. And we probably should present that on every line item, you know, the police department is this much money and that costs you twenty-five dollars for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value you have. So someone can go, oh, okay, so the police department cost me two hundred, my house is appraised at four hundred, the police, four hundred thousand, the police department's gonna cost me two hundred dollars a year. And they can say, I think that's a good deal, or it's not a good deal.
And that's what.
That would be cool.
That's what Dick was talking about, we did, try to, try to show people based on the value of their homes, um, what their, their cost share would be for certain things.
Yeah, everything, highway department, fire department, yes, those extra sinking funds, equipment reserves, you could say, hey, so for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, this is gonna cost you two dollars. Probably realistic, and wouldn't you say, and then.
Oh, is it Brad Turner, is that who Brad is?
Yeah, it's, he just wrote that, the, about the assessment first.
Yeah, I was gonna address his question, I wanted to make sure I knew what his surname was though. Um, I believe your question is about those three reserve account items that we had as separate articles last year and we're seriously considering doing the same thing again this year. I think the consensus of the board last meeting was to do exactly that, so, um, does that answer your question, Brad? Well, I'm gonna assume it does, um, since he's still muted. Okay, um, anything else on the budget? Okay, you're welcome, Brad, thank you. Okay, um, anything else on the budget before we move on?
No, you're not here, Dick, so you, you, I, I have a copy for you, but I printed out the, that vehicle replacement schedule and I reworked that thing and tried to do everything I could possibly think of to keep intact the replacement, but look at the costs and how we can move things around, um, and it, I, I, over what I gave you previously, the, the second year that we're in, um, it was seventy-five last year, so that's that, um, I charted the column with two thousand twenty-six, under two thousand twenty-seven, it'd be forty-nine point two for the highway department's, um, vehicle replacement. Um, what, what was in here, I had to take into account, uh, was the single axles. We didn't have a, one of the replacements on there for that, cause we're not, we're not keeping both of them, but we, we decide, the board decided to keep them until they're economically not repairable anymore, but that's, that got added to the, to the schedule, and that threw everything out, a little out of whack for me, but, um, that's, this is over, I put it through a twenty-year period, which would have, this ought to be reevaluated, you know, every few years to really make it work, um, but that's, that's what I come up with, um, to present to you for, if it's a separate ballot article, the number that I come up with would be basically forty-nine thousand.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be stopping by the town office with that document you wanna be assigned tomorrow anyway, so I pick that stuff up from you then.
Okay. And the, the, what you're not seeing is the other tab that has all this broken down by the type of vehicles, the starting price, the inflation built in, um, and that's what I, the, the reads from those, the, these cells on this, one you got reads from those to, for most of them, some are manual, cause I looked at it and I'm like, oh, I, we need a total, let's, let's say we need a total of three hundred ten thousand dollars for a truck, and it was, they're not all equal, um, I had to, based on what else was being replaced that year, I had to move stuff around, but at the end we'll still have the three-ten, but it might be a little, little different numbers each year, but. That's the, and some of it's used stuff, and, you know, we're not gonna buy a new excavator or a new grader, we'll never be able to afford it. This is used stuff, um, so, anyway, that's, that's what I come up with so far, and hopefully if you get a chance to look at it or wanna sit down with a full document open, I can show you where the numbers come from or.
We may have to tack one more year on each of the old girls.
Well, my, my, one of the things I was gonna recommend to the, to the select board was we're getting rid of those trucks at seven years when the warranty runs out, might not be able to do that, and we have to stretch it out to nine or ten years. And if we do our due diligence and keep them undercoated and keep them greased and taken care of, I don't see why that truck won't last for ten years. Especially now with all the stainless steel and aluminum on them, that, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask, yeah, we might not get the resale value out of it, but if we can't afford it, you can't afford it.
Yeah, we're not getting much resale value anyway.
No.
I, I think that ten is really conservative, you know, I think that we should be looking for two hundred thousand miles, I know that's a lot of use on an in-town truck, but.
Usually it's not the miles that, and it kills it, it's the, the rotting of the body, cause we don't, you know, we haven't done our, probably the best that we could do to keep these things from.
Yeah, and there's only so much you can do when they're getting beat up every day, I mean.
Yeah.
The salt is horrible, but yeah, I think that's worth a little extra effort, if we could squeeze a couple more years out of them.
I, I'm, I'm all for redoing that thing, and, and I just did it because of that whole resale and at the end of a lease uh, for the trucks, I mean, the grader and the excavator and all those, they're not, they're not leased or alone on them, so we do, you know, we don't, there's not that kinda consideration, but I'd love to stretch it out to nine or ten years.
Right.
And that.
Well, it gives you the availability to take something like that excavator and say, hey, we're gonna put eighteen or twenty thousand dollars into it.
Yeah, the, I, I think that our excav, I agree with you, Mark, I think, and I, hopefully everybody kinda sees that too, is like that grader, we, we put some money into that grader a little bit here and there, it, it's, it's gonna last. It's, it doesn't have the electronics on it, and it doesn't need to have the electronics on it. It needs to make bumpy roads flat, that's all it needed to do. Um, and, uh, and it, it does that, so that, that's, you know, something that we should, when this gets evaluated every couple of years, we can say, hey, we can get another two years out of that. So maybe we can reduce that cost somewhere along the line, um, and just, you know, be diligent about reviewing it, and each select board could have a different process or thought process on this, but for right now, this is what, you know, you're guys, you're the ones that are reviewing it, so, um, but.
Well, I can say that we're doing a much better job of taking care of our equipment than we did, say, ten years ago.
I don't disagree with that either, I, I'm, I'm never satisfied, so I'm not the guy to ask sometimes on that stuff, but I think that what I've seen at the garage is they've been doing more kind of preventive type maintenance, and we have been in the, the last seven years anyway. Good.
Mr. Turner, I have one more question about what we do with our, the funds in our reserve accounts, and I can't answer that off the top of my head, but I can say that we don't just keep them in a savings account, there's, they're invested in higher yield venues, I don't recall what, maybe you wanna speak to that real briefly, Mike?
Um, actually, um, right now, all of the reserve accounts are in, uh, just a regular savings account. It gets three point six-five percent interest right now, and I talked to the treasurer about this and really need to talk to the select board, but they were talking about putting it in, um, some higher yield, um, vehicles, um, so, but it, it's, I, what we look at with the reserves is usually it's, um, it's predictable, we're gonna buy a piece of equipment, we know we wanna try to buy it in this year. So unless something catastrophically fails, putting reserve funds into higher yield mechanisms is not as risky. Um, we don't wanna do that with our operating budget, you know, cause, you know, we might, we have to pay the bills with that, but the reserve funds, we could do something with it, and so, uh, Abby, Abby said that she would look into what, um, uh, Bar Harbor has, uh, cause they did talk to us at one point about some of their like CDs and other things like that, but we, we need to be able to get the, you know, shorter, short-term but safe enough to, if we need to get it, we can get it out.
I do know we have done some of that in the past with previous treasurers, but I don't know how much of that, you know, I don't pretend to remember any details.
Yeah, everything right now is in savings accounts, um, we, cause we were getting three point six-five percent, um, from the banks.
That's good.
Yeah, and that's why we did it, Brad, is it, it was like, hey, this is actually pretty good, so, um.
Yeah, you, one thing you could think about is, uh, you know, you don't wanna gamble with this money, but you wanna try to be, have it in, uh, you know, uh, low-risk, uh, low-volatility investments. One thing you think about is you could do like a, a ladder of CDs, like with, you know, do one every three months or something, so you always have ones that are, and do short-term, like you said, so you always have them rolling over in a period of time.
Yeah, that, that's what the bank recommended anyway, did not put it all in one.
Right now, it's all the short-end stuff anyway, because of, they're expecting interest rates to go down, so the bank's CDs, at least for, um, you know, for individuals are, uh, you know, in around that high three range.
Yeah. Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the budget, Mike, or are we gonna move on to manager of your board?
We're good to move on.
Okay, let's do that. Has the board, is the board satisfied with the budget so far?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to manager of your board.
All right, um, you don't have one, um, just the highlights, uh, the transportation alternative program for the Main Street pedestrian accessibility, um, that, uh, Fussin' O'Neil, they found they had the capacity to be able to take on the project through the, at the ready list, um, they, they have a formula, you can't, you can't do too many of these grants um, at a time, um, so they have the capacity to do it, they've got the, uh, RFP from Stephanie Burke at the Regional Planning Commission, and they're gonna begin working on it. Did I share with the board what I sent them about the sidewalks? Um, about the curbing, the trees, the roots of the trees, um, I'll, I'll, I apologize, I, I, I'll get it to you. Um, I'd sent that to him, I sent it to Dick, cause he's on the, on the steering committee, um, but I, I said to him, in your, in your planning, we got a lot of old historic shade trees that are right in the path uh, where the roots would be in this sidewalk, and that they need to do a better job than they did at the Parsons Hills one. Um, they had to move that away from those trees because of, no one thought about, hey, if I dig up all these roots, I could kill the tree. Um, so I asked them to do that, I asked them to, the curbing, to repurpose what we could, and then, um, the stuff that couldn't be repurposed is replacing it, um, especially from basically the drive into the, well, along Main Street, some of it doesn't have it right now. I didn't say add more, just said what we have now is, if it's not in good shape, to get it replaced, not to remove any. Um, there was, Dick, help me out, I'm having a, drawing a blank here, what was, there was four things. The lighting, lighting, um, said, you know, there's, lighting can go from a real, cheap lighting to really expensive lighting, I said, we kinda want like middle of the road, it has plugs on it that you could plug decorations into if we ever wanted to, to do that, cause the cost of doing that afterwards is, would be astronomical. Um, so that was the lighting, and that it's downward facing, um, along the sidewalk, so it's not shining into people's windows, uh, cause if you notice, there's the road, strip of grass, sidewalk and houses, and those lights are gonna be along that, the path where it's closer to the houses than the road, so that we don't want people to complain, cause lights are shiny in their rooms and stuff like that, so. I'm not sure if that was all, those four things. Um, but, so they've, they've taken out, they got the RFP and, and they've got a timeline to get it back to us for the board to review.
Great.
The, the trestle on South Street, there was only one bidder for that project, despite the fact that like five or six showed up to have the meeting, then they had, Jeff had another meeting, uh, last Monday, and only one person showed up. So we got one bid, I asked them, I asked Christine and Jeff to put out the addendum to extend the deadline by two weeks, so that we can reach out, Jeff can reach out to those folks and see if they just, do they want to, or they just missed the date, or, you know, whatever. But I don't think, I didn't think the board would wanna try to act on just one bid, it's not our bid policy. So, um, that, that would be back in time to bring it before the next meeting. I signed the contract with Casella Construction, um, sent it back to Aldridge and Elliott, and they sent it to Casella's for the Depot Terrace Sewer Project. I spoke with Mike Farben from Foster Sargent's Appraisals in Rutland about assessing the three-ten acre parcels um, up by Crystal Heights, and, um, I got, I'm gonna send him. Crystal Heights, and I'm going to send him, I'll send Mike the blister cards this week, and then we're going to schedule a day to go out and walk the, the ground. And he, he said that, then he'll send us a proposal, what it would cost for them to do their thing. But that's moving, moving forward.
Any questions for the town manager?
I'm not done, sorry, Dick. I paused, but I'm...
Okay.
Good try, Dick.
The, the main pump station roof, that's, I still only have that one bid. I got no, nothing back from the other two. So, I'm just going to hit them up again, and if I don't get anybody, I'm going to bring the one bid back to you on the next meeting.
That was because the other two bids weren't written out. You don't know what they're doing, right?
Yeah, it was, not enough definition or detail in it. The trackless machine, so the trackless was at the dealer. I apologize, I thought this was the correct one, and I didn't, I was in a hurry and I didn't look at it. But there was, to fix the trackless, all the things that were on the list, it was around a little over $33,000. For the PTO, the reason it went there, the PTO, that was a little over $22,000, and that was, you know, the replacement of the PTO, the, the flywheel and that, and stuff in there. So, the board will have to make a decision on what to do with, with that. You have, you don't have the, the quotes, I, I'm going to send it to you by email. I'll print out, I'll put it in the mailboxes too, so that we can talk about it. It's not, it's not a killer right now that it waits the next meeting, but get some time to think about it. My recommendation is to fix the damn thing. And I have a lot of reasons, after talking with Heath, reasons why. Rob was in today, and I talked to him, I had talked to Mark earlier. But after reviewing this and looking at all facts, and what we need it for, what it can do and can't do, I, I prefer to fix it and, and then look, look at, you know, its replacement at some point down the road. But I would never buy a new one at $120,000. Crazy. I mean, you, you see those ones they say in the links? You can buy used ones out there for less than $50,000. There was ones that are $18,000, $15,000, but they're vintage circa 2006. There's newer ones out there that are...
Bad PTOs.
Well, that's, that's what happens. You buy, you buy a used one, and the PTO goes in that one, you're $22,000 now.
That machine is down at the dealers now in Albany.
Yeah. You know Albert Rogers? I was going to see, if we get it back, when we get it back here, I was going to ask Albert if, if, if the board decides not to fix it, was to see if he'd look at it, but I don't know. I, I think it's probably, if it had to go to the dealer, because no one around here wanted to touch it, I'm assuming that maybe Albert isn't going to, it won't be his thing, but who knows? You never know. But the cot, the price, the parts were expensive. You know, of that $22,000, I mean, you're like, I forgot exactly, $10,000, $11,000 or more was parts. So...
It's tough when you don't see it too. You know, I Googled trackless PTO repair, and there's 10 different companies that make repair kits that are no money, you know, a couple hundred bucks. Of course, I don't know what this one needs.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell you much.
Yeah.
Other than apparently this is not an uncommon problem, and they're not the only ones that make parts for it.
It's the clutch, the flywheel, you know, so that, it's this, the, the PTOs needed to make the things, everything work, you know, attachments and stuff. But it, I looked at the budget, that, what you, what I got there, so that's on there. What I proposed is on that sheet. You've got that long sheet right there. But we had, we were putting $17,000 in there, and so basically, this would take two years' worth of what we were putting away to fix it, and then we can back off two years down the road and look at putting a little bit of money in there, maybe to replace it 10 years down the road with a, another used one. But it's got a lot of use. I was talking to Heath today. One of the things it has is a, the long chute, like, we're going to put these sidewalks in down the village, and those, those jut outs, now you're going to, can't plow through those. So now it's going to create snowbanks, and he, he said, it has the chute, you just drive along with the truck and shoots it all in the back of the truck. I didn't know we had that.
So we have a snow blower, huh?
Yeah. We have two snow blowers. The little one, and then the big one that you see, you know, that, like in the city, somebody's following up with a truck, buying a truck and dumping into the truck. We have that too. We got a, a big mower deck on it, or not on it, but for it. I always look at things like, what happens when the price of paying someone to mow our lawns gets too much? Because if you remember, the last, we're in our second year of a contract, it went up a lot. We're paying $30,000, you know, like, what happens if that gets to, goes up to $45,000? When's the select board going to look at that and go, that budget's, Town Land's budget's going out of sight? You know, do we have to go back to mowing? I don't know. I mean, there's just, there's options with that thing. And just so everyone's aware, talking with Heath today, the, the sander hopper on that holds three times the material than does the one that goes on the front of the skid steer. So if you picture round trip back and forth, you got to go, you got to plow with the skid steer, then you got to go back, put the attachment on, and sand. So you're talking about seven miles almost of sidewalk on a tracked skid steer. So...
So, Mike, why don't you give us, provide us with the repair quote, and we'll make a decision at the next meeting?
Okay. All right. I'll, I think there's, I'll have to give you a little more information so you, help you make a decision, I think. But, all right. I know you're probably in pain now, Dick. The salt shed, the electrical's still not done in the salt shed, we're still waiting on that. Carrie Fowler has the parts for the compressor at the fire station. He just needs to schedule with Heath, it's been ongoing. Haven't done it yet. That's it. Brown, your questions?
Any questions for Mike on the manager's report?
I'm good. I got nothing, Dick.
Okay. Purchase orders, you want to, you want to present the purchase order, Rob? If you would be kind enough to initially approve all that the select board?
Sure.
Stay in there, Rob?
Yep. I would make a motion to approve purchase order number 055000 to the Castleton Fire District Number 1 for the sum of $117,778, and that was for pilot money.
Can I, can I add something to this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That this money we received never paid them, so our budget, those budget years have gone by, the '24, '25. So, we're going to, this money's going to come out of our coffers. And we're trying to fix it going forward, but this money is, all that money that comes in that we get, we didn't realize that some of that goes to the fire district, so $50,000. So anyway, it's just going to take a rabbit punch in our kidneys on, on our, out of our coffers.
The bottom line is, it's their money though, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054821 for the sum of $11,980.42 to T.W. Ferguson for the culvert stuff for Brown Farm Road.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Would make a motion to approve purchase order number 054862 to Earl's Truck Repair for the sum of $2,185, and that was for pulling truck 103 out of the ditch.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion to approve purchase order number 054824 to Avalanche for the sum of $2,144.99 for the Dodge 5500 repairs.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just quickly, I just want to ask quickly, what went wrong with this Dodge this time?
I don't remember now.
Breaks.
Just all breaks.
Breaks. It looked like some lights and stuff got replaced. State inspection.
Yeah, the lights were out. They couldn't drive it at night because the lights were out.
ABS tone ring. Calipers.
Yeah. And, and our mechanic's not, he's on vacation for two weeks, or, or paternity leave for two weeks. Had a baby girl.
He did?
Yeah, I do.
He didn't, but his wife did.
What'd you say? What did you just say?
I said he had a, they had a baby girl, and Mary Lee said he did. I said it was wife did.
Yeah, why?
So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Purchase orders, or purchase order warrants?
Would make a motion to approve warrant number 1205 for the sum of $40,342.26. Warrant number 1208 for the sum of $2,206,253.82. Warrant number 1126P for the sum of $20,431.13. And warrant number 1204P for the sum of $20,346.43.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, in your packets, there was the FY27 member dues from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and that's built, I already built that in the budget if the board wants to pay that money to them.
I thought we discussed that for the last meeting, or was that for the previous fiscal year?
Don't make me lie to you.
We did.
Did you? Okay, all right. Because I did put it in the budget, so, all right. Based on the census. Yeah.
We've agreed to proceed with that, but I don't know what the mechanics are, Mike. Do we have to, do we have to present purchase order first to approve or warrant or something?
Um, I got to talk to, I need to talk to Joe. I'm not sure if that's a, one of those appropriations things, or if it's just a budget item. I don't recall.
That wasn't on...
I can't remember a lot tonight. I don't know what's going on.
Well, what did I do with it? I don't know. It must have, isn't, the actual warrants, are they inside the red folder?
They might be right inside the cover. Yeah. It said, "Shay original."
They're usually on the cover of the red folder, Bob.
Yeah, they weren't on the cover. Rob said they weren't.
It should be saying "original" too.
I thought they were right on top of the warrants, because I, they said, well, the warrants are behind that first page. No?
Usually the, the purchase orders for approval and the warrants are on, outside the cover, rubber-banded to the front of the red folder.
Yeah, I thought they were, and we can't seem to find them.
While you're looking, let me go outside to make sure it didn't fall off the seat in my, in my car.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't know what to...
Rob, Christine signed me up for the...
Okay.
I saw it, and I asked her to sign. I forgot what my password was to get in myself, so I want her to do it for me. Too many programs and too many passwords.
Yeah, not kidding.
Can't use the same one for everything.
Now you need a password manager, and you have to have a password for that.
Now I've got them all written down, so if anything happens to me, my daughter's got...
Maybe you guys can correct me.
I do have it. I'm sorry.
I'll order mine.
Any luck finding the warrants?
Yeah, I had them.
I thought they were on top here. Is that, that Dodge pickup a 2014? Is that a misprint? That thing's not 11 years old.
No, can't be.
No. Well, that's what the paperwork says.
I think it's a 22, isn't it?
Hey, that's more like it, Mark, yeah. I don't know why they got 2014 written on the paperwork.
Rob's guilty.
Say, because they're on my car.
Mark, there's something. Mike, correct me on that Dodge 55, Dodge 5500, that is not a 2014, right?
No, it's a 2019. The Dodge Ram?
Yes.
It's 2019.
Well, the paperwork says 2014.
Okay. No, it's a 2019.
Okay, that's more like it. Wherever you're ready, Mr. Steele, right? You're signing, aren't you? You already rattled through them, and we approved them and all that?
Yeah.
We approved the warrants, we just need to find them and sign them.
We're working on it. We're doing it.
Wow.
Okay. Well, while we're doing that, let's start with select board comments. Who isn't signing right now? Mark, you aren't signing.
Yes, I am.
Do you have any select board comments?
Oddly enough, I have none.
Okay, you, I don't have eyes on the board, so who else is not signing the warrants right now?
Mary Lee is not.
I have none.
Mary Lee, do you?
None.
Okay, that leaves Rob and Bob. Answer at your convenience.
Still questioning about the speed signs on the side of the road, if they're too close to getting damaged.
I asked Justin to look at them. I just hadn't followed up with him. I did ask him to look at them to see if we had to pull them for the winter.
Hate to see them get damaged.
Agreed.
I have nothing for open session, Dick.
Okay. So, action items, that concludes, I have no comments. So, action items, the only thing I have is for me is to do a select board report for the, for the town report, and that is due before the end of December. Anything else?
And set a date for the town meeting, too.
Yep. And I've got, I got to get prices pulled together for...
Mary Lee's got to sign on that.
The select board for the town meeting for the buildings, especially this building, or for this building.
Thank you.
So that concludes action items, so we need an executive session. It sounds like we do, and for what?
I'm not, I'm kind of confused of what it's going to fall under, but, uh...
Well, it's either personnel contracts or labor relations or real estate.
Personnel for me.
Okay, I would probably go under real estate on mine.
So, Rob, you got the blue folder, you want to put the others?
I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the personnel matter at hand would put the board at substantial, would put the board at a substantial disadvantage because of the sense of the nature of the personnel situation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we enter into executive session to discuss the personnel matter under provisions of Title 1, Section 313a1a of the Vermont statutes.
Second.
With me and...
With the town manager and the select board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive session.
Bye.
Good night.